All right, it appears that it is getting ready to to stream back. I'll notify you once the stream is back up. All right, the stream is back up.
So should I start over or just continue where I left off?
You can start over. You just started. Why don't you just start over with your presentation?
Great. So a little over a month ago, Apex decided plan for a temporary component staging area located in section 28 of Nattawa Town. This plan is seeking to amend the approvals from last year. Specifically amend the site plans that
We're not sure what's going on, but it does say we're live again. So let's let's give her a try again here.
Thank you, Tim. We are looking at a site plan submitted by Apex a month ago to amend their site plan approvals from last year. Apex has looked at what they're calling as a temporary component staging area, which is located to be planned to be located in section 28 of Nattawa Town. It's in the southeast quarter of that section at Jordan and Wind Roads. The site plan is relatively straightforward. They have a leased area of 20 acres, of which they're going to use 13.9 acres for the the staging area. And it's my understanding the staging area is to temporarily store turbine components during construction as they prep the actual turbine sites to is a is a holding area so they can actually move those components to visual turbine site. So that's why it's a large area. One could imagine there'll be missiles and rotors stored there. Albert from Apex will have a moment after I'm done to address some questions and perhaps clarify what the intent of the temporary component staging area is. Generally speaking, it's going to be a temporary use. It's it's a lay down some some material and they will store their sites, store their components for construction. Then after that's all done, they'll restore the site. So with that, you know, there's a couple of items we just wanted to consider for our review tonight. We note that the applicant is not proposing any structures on the site. And so we have no concerns about setbacks or any other items that would be your schedule of regulations. We note that the site plan has two curb cuts along Wind Road. That's the eastern boundary of the property. We know that the applicant will need to provide the county, the approved drain commissioner and permission permits. They're proposing a silt fence along the road right away and around the topsoil pile. The applicant already has an has approved soil erosion and sedimentation sedimentation control permit for this for these improvements. And then the proposed improvements will need approval from the former DEQ now Eagle. And they have Apex has indicated they have submitted their application for it. So overall, the site plan is pretty straightforward. We just have four questions for the applicant. We have we have indications from the applicant on these answers. We would like to ensure that the applicant conveys this information to the planning commission before they make a decision. Our questions are thus. Has the applicant for any lights or lighting at the site? Are there any plans for fencing? What about signs? Will there be a need for some signage at the site? Then finally, we'd like to have some understanding of the the site restoration plan in agreement with the landowner. So soon after I'm done, I'll refer to Tim and we'll engage Apex on these questions. And any other and any other questions commissioners may have. But ultimately, our recommendation is to approve the site plan. We've noted that in our staff report. And with that, I'll turn it over to Tim.
Thank you. So so thank you, Alan. Just a just a quick note. As Alan indicated, there are some requirements that we wanted to see. We did include them in part of your resolution for tonight. Those were the driveway permits from the road commission, any drain commission, additional drain impacts that would be had that would be any permitting or any information for the drain commission as well as the Eagle permit. We have received the Eagle permit notice of coverage. And we have received the driveway permits from the road commission. And so as we move forward, Apex can answer those questions there and we can have maybe a little discussion with with them with regard to any impacts on a drain in the in the area. And if they've addressed the drain commissioner in any way. So Ray, if you would remove the site plan for us. Thank you. And then is the applicant unmuted to discuss?
They are.
So Albert, could you indicate and answer these questions for us that were addressed or raised in the staff report?
Yeah, happy to. And thank you, everybody, for for being here and being on tonight. As Tim mentioned, we do have, we have secured the the Eagle notice of coverage. So that that has been executed and shared with the county. But I guess kind of going through the list of questions. First question is about lighting. We do not intend to have lighting at that at the site. We also do not intend to have any fencing. It is really just generally intended to be kind of an open staging area essentially with two entryways or two access points coming off of Wind Road. We do have the executed driveway permits from the Isabella County Road Commission. Question about signage. We do not intend to have any signage at the site. Yes, project specific signage unless unless otherwise requested by the by the planning commissioner by the county. However, I will say that in in accordance with the requirements from the from Isabella County Road Commission, we will have some safety signage placed there on site leading to and from on Wind Road, leading to and from from that that's specific location. And so that's a requirement of the Isabella County Road Commission. There'd just be essentially caution, you know, trucks, trucks entering or construction activities. Warning sign just to make sure that people are aware that there could be some activity out there. But other than that, we do not at this point intend to have signage, again, unless ever requested. And then there was a question about the the restoration plan for the site. And so very similar to what we would do with all of the other temporary turn radii and with what the plan is for the for the current lay down yard, actually where I'm dialing in from this evening. We do have a plan in place to restore that site to to its original use. It'll go back to farm ground once we're done. We've discussed this with the landowner, Mr. Randall Yunker. And essentially, we will once we are done using the site, we'll remove all the aggregate material, all that, all the the aggregate or whether it be limestone or the gravel. That aggregate material that we use there on the site will actually be reapplied to either county roads or the the permanent roads that we're building out to the turbine locations themselves. So the material that we use at the component staging area will be repurposed and and used on other roads in the county. At the end of the day, but for the restoration, we'll pull that material out. And then then we will go back and decompact the soil, essentially the the subsoil. And then we will respread the the topsoil back over back over the ground as we prepare the site and turn it back over to to farm ground. So there'll be a, you know, the fairly fairly thorough restoration process, just like what we'll do in other parts of the project.
All right. Thank you, Albert. Bill, we have been notified by one of the planning commissioners who has excused himself that the it's telling us we have a live feed to YouTube, but he's telling us he does not see it on YouTube. So I don't believe we are live out there to the public.
Do we have any other way to check whether or not there's a live feed out there?
Ray indicated to me, Ray indicated to me that he went onto his cell phone and tried to get the feed as well, and he's not seeing it. I do see it on my screen. It says live on YouTube. I'm not sure if the rest of you see that. Yeah.
I see that, too. Do you want to take another break?
Yeah, I'm not sure it's going to be something that we're going to be necessarily able to fix. We can try and take a quick recess break of maybe five minutes and see if we can't make a call and and see if we can't get somebody to figure out what's going on. But I'm not sure we will be able to to get anybody.
The only other thing that we could do would be, and I don't I don't know how we would do this at this point, but we could allow people to access the Zoom link and put them in a waiting room if you've got that capability.
They currently, I think they currently are. But we don't know if there's people, you know, if you're wanting to call in and listen and be a be a caller or participant, they can do that currently according to the notice. But if they're just watching on YouTube and not a caller in, they're seeing nothing.
Right. And there's really nothing we can do to advise them of that situation.
I don't I don't believe so.
My my recommendation would be to see if we can fix it. If we cannot fix it, then I would recommend that we go ahead with this meeting and attempt to to get the business done. And if we don't have a proper feed, I think the best remedy would be for us to to reenact this at the next at the next meeting.
Okay. All right. So let's take let's take like maybe five minutes really quick here and we'll we'll see what we can't do on our end here.
All right. Good luck.
Thank you.
Can you think of a way they can
So the magic of technology, it seems like it just started working again. So it's on our commissioner. He's seeing it. Ray, we just reviewed it. We've seen a good 16, 17 minutes of of the, you know, that that we can see the video. So I think the recommendation to go ahead and just move forward and see what we see thereafter. We'll review it at that time. But now that we have
We need to wait for everybody to get back.
Yep. So we'll take those couple of minutes still and wait for people to come back. Welcome to the new world we live in.
No, that's exactly right. Nobody would know about that. So you're not really able to. There is a call.
Yeah. Looks like maybe we're just waiting on Bob.
Oh.
Bob Campbell.
Yep. So we are live right now. I got confirmation of that from somebody who's watching. Also, the other thing that we can do. People are able to call in and listen to this via the telephone as well. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and that was posted in the notice, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So I think that's, I mean, that that was the that was a backup default that we put into our into our notice. And if someone does want to participate, they can still do so by by phone, even if the YouTube link goes down.
That is correct, right, Ray? As a host, you don't have them muted out. Callers that call in but are not videoed in are still able to hear and you can control their their mic, right?
Yes, I could be admitted to the room and then they could be muted.
Okay.
This is the point of order. Should we add that to our, should we put that into our meeting agenda minutes or anything like that? That is that or is that automatically included? That policy? What's your thoughts, Mr. Fay?
That ought to be reflected in our minutes because I think we need an accurate record of of, you know, of how the meeting was conducted. And in the future, if we have not been making that clear, we should make it very clear that you know, that that meeting access is available through this telephone number. A lot of the electronic meetings that I participated in for a lot for a lot of smaller municipalities, they've been doing the whole meeting by telephone, and that's been perfectly acceptable.
Would we need to amend our motion to approve the agenda then and add that as an amendment or not?
I I think that you could you could do that before proceeding, yes.
All right. Since I mean, I don't know who I think I made the motion to the agenda. I don't know who was the second. I'd like to make a motion to amend my approval of the agenda to add the inclusion of what is the word? I just had it in my hands. The the policy as far as the meeting, how the meeting is conducted and how it can be accessed or public meeting.
So the so the well, hang on a minute. I guess we have a motion. We have a second.
I would do it whoever seconded my original motion. I can't remember who did that.
I think it was Mr. Nyer.
He's out right now.
Oh.
So so let me jump in really quick while while we're there. So the notice, the notice reads, you know, all interested persons may attend and participate. The public will be able to access the meeting live on Isabella County. Isabella County Community YouTube channel or by telephone. To access the meeting by YouTube, here's the link. To access the meeting by telephone, please call this number. So I think we've noticed it for both pieces. And one of them just happens to, you know, be on and off for us tonight. So I think maybe our notice does have us covered. What do you think, Bill?
I absolutely think so. I there's no requirement for perfection. And we did have redundancy. We're darn happy that we did. Because there's two different ways to reach this meeting. And if one of them goes down, the other is still available and everyone has notice of that.
Okay. Then if I don't withdraw my motion, then it's I can I'll just withdraw that secondary motion then. Let's move forward.
Okay, back to I believe.
Do we have Anne back?
I'm here, but it's I don't have video.
Okay. Well, as long as Anne, as long as you can hear, I think we're good to move forward.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. So I think, Albert, you had just finished up on your end. I think Alan, then did did Albert, I think he answered all the questions that the staff report had asked as well as clarified the documents that they've delivered and provided to us at this point already. So I guess we're at the time in the in the discussions maybe here that we would have maybe the attorney review the resolution that was prepared for the planning commission for this action item.
Just it did to the one thing came to mind, and that was a question about the the drain commission. There are no county drain impacts, just to in to be thorough. There are no drain county impacts. So we have, you know, we've we've run that exercise as well. So there's nothing to be concerned with on the county drain either.
Okay, we'll just have you provide the office with a document if this is approved from the drain commission that says of no impact.
Correct.
So if Mr. Fay, he would go ahead and share with us the the resolution that was prepared for this.
All right, Tim Ray, have you brought up the? There we go. It's coming right now. So we have prepared for the consideration of a planning commission, a draft decision on on this staging area amendment. And I'm not going to read every word, but I'm going to summarize what it says. In in the first paragraph, we basically recite the history of this application going back to 2019 and the reviews of the special use permit that were made and the original site plan approvals that were granted. There's been a lot of history to this project. It's a very large project, has a lot of moving pieces. And at this point where we are is, as has been discussed, the the applicant wishes to add a 14 acre temporary component staging area. You've heard the recommendation by Spicer, which is our staff report. And of course, we're going to make up that report a part of this decision. But the principal part of your decision are your findings here on the middle of page one. And your findings include the following. Number one, you are adopting and incorporating Spicer's staff report as a part of your findings on this decision. Secondly, you're making specific findings under the zoning ordinance, section 11.06A. And as you will see, there are four specific findings that you're required to make under that section of the zoning ordinance. One dealing with vehicular and pedestrian traffic movement on the site and access to streets. The second one dealing with the harmoniousness of this with respect to the immediate area. The third basically stating that the uses will be adequately served by all of the necessary public improvements. And fourth, that the application is adequate to provide for the health, safety and general welfare of the persons who are on the property and also those who are in the neighboring community. After the findings, you then make conclusions which are that based upon the materials that you reviewed, including the staff report and other materials, you're concluding that the addition of the temporary component staging area to the site plan meets all the requirements of site plan review, subject to specific conditions. So the conditions are four in number. And those conditions are number one, that the applicant must comply with all of the conditions of the previous planning commission approvals, which include the special use permit and the prior site plan approvals. Secondly, that the applicant must seek and obtain all permits and permissions required by the community development department, the road commission, the drain commissioner, Eagle. And we've heard some statements made tonight that that those approvals either are not necessary or have been made. And the third is that the applicant shall only use the temporary component staging area from May 2020 to October 31, 2020, but can extend that period of time by making a supplemental application to the planning commission. And finally, that the applicant must comply with all local, state, federal laws, rules and regulations related to the site plan for the project. At the appropriate time, there should be a motion made, a second and a roll call vote taken on this. Once it has been approved by the planning commission, then it can be signed and by the chair and certified by the secretary. Are there any questions that anyone has about this proposed decision? If there are none, is this? Then I guess we're looking for a motion and a second to move forward.
This is Silker. I would move that this request be permitted contingent upon compliance with previous approvals, that all permits needed or indicated are sought and obtained, that the use be from May of 2020 to October 31st, excuse me, of 2020, and that it could be extended if needed by asking for a further permit and that the project comply with all local, state and federal laws.
Or we'll support that. Bill, can I support that?
All right. Kim, we have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Selker.
Yes.
Commissioner Horton.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
And Commissioner Bean.
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
All right. We can move ahead now to plan review 20-05.
Yeah. So, um, 20-05 is an amendment to the lay down yard, which adds a couple of, um, um, structures. Uh, looks like office structures to it. But, uh, Alan, if you would go ahead and share your, uh, staff report with the planning commission, we appreciate it.
Sure. Thanks, Tim. I think we'll, uh, ask Jenny to, to go ahead and present the staff report. I'll, I'll just hand it off to her.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jenny. I work with Alan at Spicer Group. Um, I have to apologize. I'm having some internet issues. So if I cut out, that's what's going on. But I'll try to get through it now before that happens again. So what Ray is showing you on the screen now is the proposed site plan that Apex has submitted. And, um, like Tim mentions, it does propose two additional trailers. Ray, if you could pull up the, the marked up site plan I sent earlier today. In addition to those additional trailers, I've also highlighted, um, some other changes just to make you aware of them. Those outlined in the blue road, um, the proposed entrance culverts, that change in size from 15 inches from 18 inches originally to 15 inches. In the southwest corner of the site, there is a topsoil pile and silt fence. If you look at the green shading around the outside of the lay down yard area, that is, um, a proposed hydro seed and mulch by applicant. And then the two remaining boxes deal with the trailers. So the original site plan proposed two tool sheds south of the parking area. The applicant has removed one of those tool sheds and added a trail to, so they removed one tool shed and then added two trailers south of the parking area. And then they also added another trailer north of the construction trailers. So those are the changes. Um, pull up my screen here, sorry.
Just Jennifer, while you're doing that really quick for the planning commission's sake. Um, the hydro seating, uh, the culverts and the stockpile in the back, uh, those are all actions in part of the permitting process, uh, through the road commission on the culverts and through the SESC, the Soil Erosion Sedimentation Control Permit, through our office requiring hydro seed, requiring silk fencing, uh, around the stockpile of soil. So those, while they're changes to the, to the, um, original site plan, there were things that agencies, um, and other permits required of them.
Correct.
Thanks, Tim. So if you can look at your staff report, there's a section, um, that's titled considerations for review. And it seems like the applicant has not proposed any new lighting for this site or proposed any changes for the signage. And they have not proposed new fencing. The trailers meet the required setbacks. So we don't see any issues with the amendment to the site plan. We do have a question for Albert at Apex. And if you could just answer it, um, it relates to the, make any changes to the agreement that you have in place with the landowner already. Um, ultimately Spicer's recommending approval of these proposed changes, uh, with the condition outlined in the resolution from Bill Fayhe, specifically the condition that the applicant will be responsible for obtaining all building permits for the proposed, um, trailers. Tim, that's it for me.
Thank you, Jennifer. Um, Albert, can you address the question there in the staff report from Spicer for the planning commission?
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty simple answer of, uh, no, mothers, this doesn't impact, uh, the agreement that we have with the landowner or, you know, the existing, um, use of the space out here.
So the tra, the trailers will be removed just like the other trailers will, and they will be permitted through building permits and electrical permits and such, uh, upon their setting, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from the applicant?
I don't think, uh, I don't really have anything else to add to this. I think, you know, these are pretty straightforward just to, uh, you know, kind of coincide with the evolving nature of, uh, the work being done, um, out there, um, at sites. So we can have, um, you know, make sure that we utilize the space in accordance with the, uh, with the approved ordinance. So, um, I think these are pretty straightforward.
All right. I, then we have a resolution to be gone over as in the last.
Yeah. Yep. We'll ask Mr. Fayhe at this time if you would review the, uh, resolution prepared for site plan review dash 20-05.
Happy to do that. And here it is. This, uh, is going to look very much like the last resolution that was before you. Um, and that will make it even faster for me to go through this resolution because I'll just, uh, I'll, I'll summarize it without repeating some of the things I had to say the first time. Again, the first paragraph deals with the history of this project. The second paragraph summarizes what it is, uh, as Jennifer has already explained, that the applicant is looking for in this amendment. And then we have the same findings, uh, relying upon the staff report, uh, prepared by, by Spicer. And also again, the same findings under section 11.06A that are required in any site plan review. Uh, that takes us to the page two and the conclusions. Um, and again, based upon the materials that you have before you, this decision would approve the amendment of the site plan for the lay down yard as requested by the applicant. Subject to conditions. And in this particular situation, we have three conditions. First one being the, uh, the compliance with all the applicable conditions of the prior approvals. Uh, secondly, the requirement, uh, that the applicant obtain all approvals required by Isabella County and the state of Michigan. And third, that the applicant comply with all local, state, federal laws, rules and regulations. Uh, again, if it is your wish to, uh, grant this approval, a simple, uh, motion to, um, approve this decision uh, and a support for that would be sufficient to put it on the floor and then we'll need a roll call vote. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fayhe. So we have a resolution sitting out there. Chair, we entertain a motion and a second to get some discussion on this. And remember to state your name when you're doing the motions.
This is Silker. I would, uh, move that we accept this recommendation based on the, the prior approvals that the needed permits are obtained and that the project complies with all local, state and federal laws.
O'Neal, second.
All right. Any discussion about this motion that's on the floor? Okay. Hearing none. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Horton.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner Bean.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Silker.
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Okay. All right. That concludes the, uh, parts of the meeting that we had to recuse some commissions from. So, uh, Ray, host, if you could bring those members back in, please. All right. We're at the final public comment portion of this meeting. So we'd like to open the meeting for public comment. Anybody that's listening on a phone.
Do we have everybody back?
I'm sorry, Tim. Could you say that again?
Do we have everybody back?
Yes, sir. We have everybody back in the meeting.
Okay. We were just getting some feedback. I want to make sure everybody was back before it was done. Thank you.
So if we, uh, this is the public portion of the meeting. Anybody that's listening, if you would, uh, if you want to, uh, join in, go star nine on your phone and the host will unmute your phone.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, there's no one, uh, who has called into this meeting?
All right. With that, we'll close the public comment section again. Um, looking for any staff comments on this meeting.
Staff doesn't have a lot of comments other than, uh, thank you for your patience. Uh, thank you for, uh, for, um, learning this new world with us. Um, I've been on, um, probably oh, a couple hundred of Zoom meetings over the last six, seven weeks. Um, this is the first, um, um, type of meeting, uh, public type of meeting that I've had to do. And, um, um, I think it went relatively well. And I appreciate everybody's, uh, ability to, uh, learn with us and, uh, move forward. I think this is, um, gonna be the wave of the future here for at least a short period of time. Um, I think the executive order is through the end of June that we can hold these. And I would think and believe that that may be extended beyond that. So we do have a June meeting. Um, we do have, I think, two or three items already in, um, so we will be having, uh, um, a meeting of some sort, uh, come June. Uh, so stay posted.
Okay. Planning commissioner comments. Uh, Ms. Silker, any comments?
No. No comment. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Vogel. None whatsoever. All right. Mr. Rogers.
No.
All right. Mr. Nyer? Any comment?
Today. Not today.
Okay. Mr. Campbell.
No.
Okay. We got here. Mr. Horton.
No.
Mr. O'Neal.
No.
All right. And I don't have any either. So I would accept a, looking for a motion to adjourn or support for that motion.
Nyer, so moved.
Horton, support.
All right. Roll call vote, Kim.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner Horton.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Nyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Commissioner Silker.
Yes.
Commissioner Bean.
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, guys.
Bye.
Hey, safe. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.